Good evening and welcome to the City of Wilmington 107th Session of City Councils Meeting of March 16th. I am President of City Council Haniveh Shabazz and I would like to call the meeting to order. We will have an opening prayer by Andrea Queen.
In humidity, gratitude, and great joy, we open our hearts, our eyes, our ears, our minds, as we meet to serve our city with the intent of doing good work, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, to make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibilities to the past and the future, and the rights and the needs of both individuals and community. May our efforts be blessed with insight guided by understanding and wisdom. As trusted servants, we seek guidance on our deliberations and on efforts may we act wisely and well and strive to reach our higher potential.
Thank you. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk will call the roll.
Present.
Councilman Congo.
Here.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Present.
Councilwoman Harley.
Present.
Councilman Turner.
Present.
Councilwoman McCoy.
Present.
Councilman Williams.
Present.
Councilman Freo.
Here.
Councilman Adams.
Here.
Councilwoman Dixon.
Present.
Councilman Guy.
Present.
Councilwoman Walsh.
Here.
President Shabazz.
Present.
While present in one accent.
Thank you. I would like to acknowledge our dignitaries in our presence today. We have the registered wheels, Mr. Cereal Poperty. And I would also like to recognize former Councilman Kevin Kelly, now working at Department, our head of Parks and Recreation. A call for suspension of, suspension, suspension of rules.
Madam President, I move for a suspension of the rules of council.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second to suspend the rules for the purpose of the mayor to present his budget address. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. I would like to assign Councilmembers McCoy, Councilmember Turner, and Councilmember Adams to escort Mayor Michael Bezicki and Mrs. Bezicki into the council chambers.
So noted.
And we now welcome Mayor Bezicki to the floor.
Madam President, ready?
Yes, sir, Mayor.
Do you mind if I try to get some of these gadgets out of my way here?
Up yourself.
Good evening, Madam President, members of council, Madam Treasurer, Department Directors, city employees, and citizens of our wonderful city of Wilmington. It is my great honor to be with you this evening to present my administration's budget for the coming fiscal year. It is not just a tally of revenues and expenses, but rather I hope it is a reflection of our aspirations and our values. In many ways, this has been the most challenging time in my life, and at the same time, the most gratifying. We all share the honor of public service, the opportunity to achieve great things on behalf of the public we serve. Note that I said opportunity, not inevitability. To achieve great things, we must exercise vision, skill, judgment, and perhaps above all courage. To say the least, it has been an interesting first 10 weeks. No one who has not served in an administration can possibly be prepared to deal with the many challenges that confront a new mayor on a daily basis. Everything is new and confounding. Budgetary constraints, personnel issues, litigation threats, the complexities of collective bargaining agreements, daily crime reports, and occasional protests, public appearances, speeches, dedications, and in between, just trying to find the time to govern. Now, it's not been an easy time for Wilmington these past few years. We lost the economic icon of our city when the department company left. We have struggled with unremitting violence in our poor neighborhoods, damaging our reputation nationally, and shaking the confidence of our citizens. We lost three of our heroes in a tragic fire which tore at our community's heart. But while we were troubled by these events, we found reason for optimism. We still believed in the fundamental soundness of our city. We all believed that there are answers to our problems. Finding those answers together, mayor and council, is our most solemn obligation. What heartens me is that there's a strong consensus in government and business alike that for Delaware to thrive, Wilmington must thrive. To that end, there has been a new era of cooperation among county, state, and city, as evidenced by the cooperation among our police departments during Operation Safe Neighborhoods. I am grateful to County Executive Matt Meyer and Governor John Carney for their support. In addition, the County Executive and I have met to resolve a five-year impasse on sewer and water agreements. In fact, we just met, we just spoke again today, and I'm confident that we're going to get something worked out. Tonight, I'm sharing with you for the first time my view of the state of the city. Wilmington is a beautiful city. Our neighborhoods are among the most appealing anywhere. Our parks and public places are special. Our residents bike and walk to work. Fifty thousand people work here each day. Our cultural centers, the downtown on the riverfront, are compelling amenities that other cities would only envy. So while there are many, many things of which we can be proud, there are also reasons to be concerned. While the state of our city is stable, there is an urgent need to work together over the next few years to reinvest in economic development and our infrastructure, to enhance government efficiency, to control costs, and to find new revenue sources. We must begin new initiatives to control crime, strengthen neighborhoods, increase employment, and improve the delivery of city services to our citizens. We should remain mindful of the fact that our tax burden in Wilmington, while low compared to other similar cities, is high when compared to our neighbors in the county. Our property taxes more than double the county rate, creating a competitive disadvantage to us, a disadvantage we can ill afford to worsen. While the reasons for the disparities are defensible, the reality is inescapable. When we opt to raise taxes, we must be mindful that there are practical limitations. Our financial picture was damaged this year when our government approved union contracts for which there were no budgeted funds. The workers' comp claim arising from the injuries of our firefighters was uninsured, a condition we propose to correct in this budget with catastrophic liability protection. These two line items alone cost the city $14 million from its unassigned fund balance, spending the approximate equivalent of our entire cash reserve account. At the same time, there was a conscious decision to ignore the then recently enacted state law prohibiting red light camera enforcement, and to continue to collect fines for illegal right turns. Our administration, when made aware of the law, chose to obey it and cease enforcement. Moreover, we've chosen to return the fines to the motorists who have been improperly fined. This will cost the city $1.4 million in lost revenue in this year and reduces revenues for this coming year. In addition to the foregoing, tax revenues have temporarily fallen this year by $3 million against projections. Taken together, these factors have created a challenging fiscal environment for the new administration. In crafting a budget, I feel we should be afforded a longer view of our city's finances than just one year. So all of the budget options we explored over the last several weeks include four-year projections. The Budget Office's first draft of a four-year budget plan with no cuts and no revenue enhancements revealed what could reasonably be called a budget crisis, a combined $54 million deficit over four years. To balance these budgets would have required several high double-digit increases in the property tax. Plainly, this was unacceptable. Our approach to a responsible budget distributes the burden of eliminating these deficits among our fund balances through government efficiencies by imposing a modest increase in the property taxes through strategies to collect new revenues, and again, among our employees. To balance the budget, I'm proposing a staffing reduction of 29 full-time positions for an annual savings of about $2.5 million. All these positions are vacant. No layoffs are required. We will continue, of course, to evaluate department efficiencies. Among these 29 positions, two positions are in the mayor's office plus reductions in salaries, two positions in law plus reductions, the deletion of a finance position, the deletion of two positions in public works, the deletion of one position in parks and recreation, the deletion of five police officers from the department's authorized strength, the reduction of 16 vacant positions from the current authorized strength in the fire department, which will result in a savings of $1.2 million. Pending a new agreement with the union regarding staff, scheduling, and deployment, the city will also continue the use of a rolling bypass, as has been the practice for the past 20 years. We are prepared to authorize the fire academy in the final budget, and I will have more to say about this in a moment. The city will also absorb the $14 million 2017 deficit from our unassigned fund balance, including those funds committed for labor contracts that created part of the year-end deficit. Had the previous administration and council funded these pay raises properly, it would have required a 15% property tax increase in that year. I want to make clear, however, that I don't believe that planned deficit spending is a responsible practice, especially because of the potential impact the spending of our available cash has on our bond rating. Notwithstanding my earlier caveats, I have proposed raising the property tax for FY2018 by seven and a half percent. In fact, we can get by in 2018 with no increase at all, but you will see that the consequences in the out years would be fiscally devastating without the moderating effect of an early increase. Please take a look at the chart in front of you. This chart is, this is a budget deficit with no property increases, although we've already, we've already made these cuts. This is what happens with no property increase. In 18, we have the small surplus, which is why I said to you, we don't have to raise the taxes this year, but look what happens afterwards. We have a $4.8 million deficit in 19, which would, which would require about a 12% tax increase. We add another $2.5 million in FY20, and then in by 21, we're adding another three and a half. We would have, we'd have at least two double-digit increases and a single-digit increase three years in a row. There's just, there's no way that we can do this. And so it seems to me this, the responsible thing to do is raise taxes this one time and moderate our deficits going forward. Now, let me just say something else. In the next slide, what we propose to do is, with our tax increase, we actually show a three and a half million dollar surplus in the first year. It wipes out any deficit in the second year. It reduces the deficit in the third year by half, and in FY21, four years down the road, we see that we have about a 5% deficit. I propose that we can eliminate all of these deficits if all we do is return our health care costs back to what they were in 2016. There you go. If you take a look at our health care costs, as I'll say in a moment, our health care costs have increased 40% over the past four years. If all we are able to do, in a manner that I'll describe in a moment, is reduce our health care costs back to what they were in fiscal 2016, we will, we will have $12 million to offset that five and a half or six million dollar deficit that I showed you in the previous slide. That's why, that's why, to me, it makes good sense to look out four years and try to put together a plan that allows us some sort of, some sort of fiscal liquidity. To fund Wilmington's water and sewer needs, I'm proposing a 4% increase for water and sewer rates. Our stormwater rates will remain unchanged. This increase for the average city residential customer will increase their, their bill by $1.81 on average. Now, this increase was the strong recommendation of the city's independent water, sewer, citizen advisory council. In fact, what they recommended was that we commit to a four-year, a four-year increase with, of approximately 4% in each year. I'm just not prepared to make that commitment. I took the recommendation for the first year. There are standards in, there are standards in the industry that they feel strongly we ought to adhere to, and so we took the recommendation for that first year, and that's all I'm committing to at this point. We've reduced costs in several other areas. City landfill fees will be reduced by $475,000, including eliminating a practice of collecting trash from 92 non-residential accounts, which in fact is prohibited by statute. We'll reduce our payment for animal control to the level properly prescribed by the statute, saving $300,000. Treasurer Jones Potter has refinanced much of our debt, resulting in an annual savings of $1.28 million in this year, plus future reductions in debt service, and there's an additional savings of $660,000 from scheduled maturing of older bond issues in this fiscal year. But much of our longer-term fiscal stability depends on getting our employment contract obligations under control. The city's cost for employee and retiree medical care and prescription drugs continues to grow at a combined rate that is three times that of general inflation. Health care accounts for $24 million of our $154 million annual operating budget. These benefits have risen by 40% over the past four years and are projected to cost us $1.2 million next year because the city has continued to absorb all of the increases in spiraling health costs. In short, our plan is far too generous and too expensive. Let me make a comparison. The state of Delaware has one of the most generous plans in the region. I know because I've had it for 20 years. It's a so-called Cadillac Tax Plan. For the plan in which 82% of city employees are enrolled, state employees pay 13% of costs, while city employees pay as low as only 4%. State employees, state co-pays are two to six times higher than ours. City co-pays are as low as $5. Emergency room visit co-pays are $150 for the state versus $50 for city, for the city plan. Removing these disparities alone would save the city nearly $1.5 million annually. But worse, but much worse, our plan creates the wrong incentives. We simply can't continue to encourage emergency room use as opposed to employees cultivating a relationship with a doctor which would guarantee better health outcomes. This is not a zero-sum game. It is not necessarily debate about who pays. If we simply mandated generic drug use and mail order usage for maintenance medications, the city could save $650,000 a year. Our health behaviors, many of the people in this room, our health behaviors are dispiriting. 75% of eligible employees have not had a colonoscopy in the last 24 months. 70% of eligible employees have not had cancer screenings in 24 months, and 62% had not had a mammogram in the past 12 months. Diabetes is a terrible disease, and yet 45% of our employees with diabetes have not had the required testing done in the, in the, in the prior year. 60% of all of our high-cost claims come from blood pressure and diabetes-driven renal failure. I have a message for our employees. You have a great pension. We want you to be around to enjoy it. Take care of yourselves. We will ask our employee unions to help us curb these escalating costs to avoid future layoffs, which would be unavoidable unless we do something about this now. We must also control the deployment of personnel better than we have in the past, which results not only in excessive overtime spending, but in the case of our police officers and not having enough officers on the street at any given time. In the case of firefighters, the current 24-hour, 72-hour shift is highly inefficient. It is also one source of our acute overtime problem, and since fire has the highest incidence of sick time, it seems to encourage excessive sick time use. In the case of police patrol officers, eight shooting days, another way of saying days off, present an added scheduling problem for management. Essentially, our offices start with 20 scheduled days unavailable for duty. In our public works department, our trash collectors work on a task system, which often results in four- and five-hour-long shifts working as little as 20 hours in four days per week. Now, I know the current shifts and schedules were negotiated with the city in good faith. There are no bad guys in this, in this situation, and I'm not insensitive to the fact that some employees have built their lives around these shifts, but we must all in good faith, faith be willing to revisit these issues. In the interest of more efficiency and economically-run city departments, we must fairly, fairly, and vigorously negotiate more equitable work schedules. Frankly, no one can possibly defend the status quo. Remember that this is a very lean budget, with no room for salary increases, new programs, no community centers, and economic development incentives. If we are to thrive, we must invest. The riverfront worked because of long-term commitment to invest. Our neighborhoods too will require investment in housing, parks, and the removal of blight. Our downtown will grow as long as we support private investment. We owe it to those who've expressed their confidence in our city, like our major law firms, and Camours, Bucini Poland, Bank of America, and the Wilmington Leadership Alliance and others, to continue the momentum. To that end, I'm committed to seeing that our downtown is welcoming, and that Rodney Square will once again be the crown jewel of our city. To accomplish these goals, we must continue to find ways to generate investment dollars. In addition to finding new revenue sources, we must grow our economy and attract new business. It is up to us to lead, to make our city appealing, but our, but our city will never flourish if its leaders are timid. We must be smart, and we must be bold. Soon, I intend to announce a section of our city as the first of the neighborhood stabilization projects. This will serve as a model for how a concentration of resources from city agencies and state agencies can together transform our neighborhoods. Police, public works, licenses and inspections, parks and recreation, and housing will work with the New Land Bank and state housing agencies to leverage our funding into renewal for impoverished sections of Wilmington. At the same time, state agencies will provide wraparound supports for many of our fragile young people in these areas, fulfilling the recommendations of the CDC report championed by Council President Shabazz. Soon, we will be starting a new Clean Streets Initiative that will begin the process of regularly cleaning our most heavily-traveled gateways. No proud city allows its streets and its neighborhoods to be ridden with trash, and we won't either. Nothing is higher on the minds of our residents and that of our business community than public safety. They ask what can be done about crime that destroys the fabric of our neighborhoods. I believe that our Wilmington Police Department has conducted itself extremely well during a difficult stretch of violence. Each day, I get notices. Each day, arrests are made. Guns are taken off the street, over 50 so far this year. But I've made no secret of my interest in fully exploring all possibilities and charting a course for the department's future. To this end, I expect to have a final decision about, about the direction of the department very soon. In the meantime, Chief Cummings will remain at the helm of the department he has so capably led over the past four years. The future for our city lies in attracting small entrepreneurs and new residents to our downtown, our riverfront, and our neighborhoods. It lies in rebuilding those neighborhoods and strengthening our neighbors. It means providing jobs for the chronically unemployed. We will work with the Wilmington Leadership Alliance to secure jobs for the jobless. For our youth, we will work to open the doors of shuttered community centers, Kevin Kelly, and build new ones. If I conveyed one message since I've taken office, it is that we are all in this together. It is not a glib slogan. It's what I believe in my heart must be at the core of the relationship between management, employees, and our citizens. I reject the belief that what is good for management is bad for labor and vice versa. This thinking derives from the mistaken view that management and the city are synonymous. In fact, management, elected officials, and labor all have an obligation first to serve the city's interests, not their own. I feel it is necessary to state what should be a guiding principle of our city, the right of self-governance. Wilmington cannot be expected to govern itself when it's constrained at every turn by the state. It never had the right of annexation, so it might have at one time grown organically. It had its residency requirements dictated by state legislation. As previously stated, the legislature last year, last year dictated us our inability to find illegal right turns. We are prohibited from raising revenue from any major source other than the property tax. And Wilmington has all been but shut out with the important question of how we educate our children. We must all urge our legislators to empower Wilmington so they may truly govern itself. I did not run for mayor to maintain the status quo, and I do not think that is what citizens wanted when they voted for us. They wanted not just change, they wanted improvement. Improvement not easily altered by future governments. We all must remain mindful of one central thought in our deliberations, our negotiations, and our decisions. Our first obligation is to, is to the health of the city, its financial health, its operational health, and its spiritual health. I invite you to join me I invite you to join me to do bold, permanent things. Let us set our Wilmington on a course that will restore the vitality and reputation of this grand old city. Let us then be guided by our goodness, our wisdom, our optimism, and our courage. Thank you.
I now accept a motion to return an order, regular order of business.
Madam President, I move that council return to the normal order of business.
Second.
It's been properly moved to second that council return to regular order of business. Are there questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Before I go any further, I'd like to recognize the presence of Senator Margaret Rose Henry has joined us. And State Representative Stephanie T. Bolden. I now have the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting.
March 2nd, 2017. Council met on regular session, the above date at 6:30 p.m. President Hanif for Shabazz Presiden. The opening prayer was.
Madam President, I move that be known as the reading of the minutes and that they be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a ye in a vote.
Second.
It's been properly, it's been properly moved to second that the minutes be accepted as written. Are there questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. I now accept the city treasurer's report.
March 16th, 2017. Total investment: 371,650,691.80. Total cash on hand: 1,257,828.38. Grand total: 372,908,520.18. Velda Jones Potter, city treasurer.
Madam President, I move the treasurer's report be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a ye in a vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved to second that the report be received, recorded, and filed. Are there questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We would now move into legislative business. Dispense for calling, and there's only business we have on the agenda today will be, is being presented by Councilmember Frill.
Madam President, I have six ordinances to present for first and second.
Yes, sir.
Ordinance 17008, Agenda 4338. An ordinance establishing a rate of taxation on real property and taxable property of public utilities for the fiscal year July 1, 2017 through June 30 of 2018.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance establishing a rate of taxation on real property and taxable property of public utilities for fiscal year July 1, 2017 through June 30 of 2018.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Madam President, I move that be known as the first and second reading of that ordinance referred to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance referred to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Ordinance 17009, Agenda 4339. An ordinance to amend Chapter 45 of the City Code regarding water rates and charges and stormwater rates and charges for fiscal year 2018.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend Chapter 45 of the City Code regarding water rates and charges and stormwater rates and charges for fiscal year 2018.
Second reading of the ordinance.
I move that be known as the first and second reading of that ordinance referred to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance referred to the Finance and Economic Development Committee meeting.
Ordinance 17010, Agenda 4340. An ordinance to adopt a capital program for the six fiscal years, 2018 through 2023 inclusive.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to adopt a capital program for the six fiscal years, 2018 through 2023 inclusive.
Second reading of the ordinance.
I move that be known as the first and second reading of that ordinance referred to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved to second that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance referred to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Ordinance 17011, Agenda 4341. An ordinance to adopt a capital budget for the fiscal year 2018.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to adopt a capital budget for the fiscal year 2018.
Second reading of the ordinance.
I move that be known as the first and second reading of that ordinance referred to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved to second that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance referred to the Finance and Economic Committee.
Ordinance 17012, Agenda 4342. An ordinance adopting the annual operating budget for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2017, and ending on June 30 of 2018.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance adopting the annual operating budget for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2017, and ending on June 30 of 2018.
Second reading of the ordinance.
I move that be known as the first and second reading of that ordinance referred to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved to second that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance referred to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Ordinance 17013, Agenda 4343. An ordinance constituting Amendment Number 7 to the fiscal year 2017 operating budget, being an ordinance to amend substitute number 1 to ordinance number 16018 as amended, by amending the declared salary rate for the chief of police.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance constituting Amendment Number 7 to the fiscal year 2017 operating budget, being an ordinance to amend substitute number 1 to ordinance 16018 as amended, by amending the declared salary rate for the chief of police.
Second reading of the ordinance.
And Madam President, I move that be known as the first and second reading of that ordinance referred to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved to second that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance referred to the Finance and Economic Committee. I accept the motion for adjournment.
Madam President, motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been properly moved to second to adjourn. Are there questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?